Some of our private participation there isn't at this time, but we'll move down to staff reports with Dr. Porter.
Thank you, President Barti, trustees. Tonight, we have several of our students here with us. They were with the Youth in Government and they went to competition in Austin, so we are very, very proud of them and the accolades that they brought back. Last month, you saw a clipping of a video, and I, today I saw the entire video, it was seven minutes, but it was absolutely fantastic. So, I'm gonna ask Courtney Charles, Mr. Charles, to come forward and just introduce the group and tell us exactly what went on and then we'll hear from our students. And thank you, board members, for agreeing and supporting them and voting for them to go and stay the time they went, February 5th, I think it was. So you all approved that last month, so thank you for that.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the board because this has been something that, it was a team effort. And we've been going to Youth in Government now for about four consecutive years. And so we've even seen it through COVID where we had to get the shots and everything like that. And this year, I think it was one of the pinnacle years because we actually had thirteen students that actually made it to the state competition in Austin. In the previous years, we... Yeah, so in the previous years, we only had three to four, and this year, we had to take the bus. So, and we're looking forward to expanding it more. But as you guys know, Youth in Government is a, is a program that's been around for almost a hundred years, to be honest with you. And a lot of people who participate in Youth in Government actually go on to really be representatives. And it's, it's really, the focus is to encourage students to understand what it's like to actively engage in the democratic process, which is, which I think is why we really do the things we do. And I mean, when you look from a historical standpoint, voting has always been something that has been manipulated for those in power to prevent others from doing, and then it's been something to die for, for those who understand the power of it. And I think the students have an opportunity to really see that, and I think you'll hear from the students today because that's why we're here. So I'm not gonna talk too much, but I did wanna just lay down the foundation and the framework for Youth in Government. Now, I'd like to acknowledge two adults that are here, and even Ms. Baptiste in her absence, because she did have a lot to do with this as well. And this is all of her students from Wilson Early College. But if Kevin Pearson would like to stand up and Ms. Avery, and you guys come on up, come on up, because they're very important. And Ms. Avery didn't get paid any extra to do what she did, but she believed in what was happening, and she put in a lot of time, and I would like to commend her publicly.
These students are amazing, and to hear them, I wish you could see the video, I wish you could see them actually do this performance. I'd like to thank you for your help, of your input each, each year, of giving them great pointers that they use every year. It's amazing to see over eleven hundred students at this, at this state conference, and our students holding their own very well. I am PAISD proud, because they are amazing, and I cannot wait to see them doing great things, not only not next year, because they're already getting ready for next year, but the tears should come because people see them in Congress, I'm not gonna bet you that. Thank you for your support.
Okay, then we have Kevin Pearson, and Kevin Pearson is, is a very important man through his process. I think about four years ago, Dr. Porter referred me to email when he first was, I don't wanna use the word soliciting, but, but encouraging us to get involved because he really believed in the heart of the program. And Kevin, I mean, without Kevin, it's, I mean, he goes above and beyond to get endorsements and different things like that. So I give Kevin just a short opportunity to share a little bit.
And just to, just to put a little bit more for Kevin Pearson, he is the president of the YMCA, and when I tell you he has turned that Y around, he has turned it around full circle, so congratulations to you again.
Shucks, I'm gonna get red without even saying anything here. Democracy is learned with every generation. I'm a, I'm a big believer in the Youth in Government program. I think this is an amazing opportunity for, for our, our young people to learn, not just about the issues, but learn how to make a difference with the issues. These are, are change makers of the future. And, and as Ms. Avery talked about, you know, eleven hundred students, when you go into that conference and you see eleven hundred students stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance, the hair rises on your arms. And when you look at that crowd, when you look at these students from all across the state of Texas, they are more representative of the population of the state of Texas than the people currently inhabiting the Senate and representative chambers. And this is what's amazing, and this is what our future is. And I, I'm really excited to be able to, to offer this program. I'm, I'm extremely grateful that, that the district allows the students to participate in this, as well as need to, to recognize United Way in mid-south Jefferson County for, for their contribution to this, and Chevron Phillips, who this year came in at the, at the eleventh hour and actually offered to pay for all of the students' fees to go to state conference. So that was a really amazing opportunity. Thank, thank you all for letting the students participate in this, and I'm sure what they have to say is way more meaningful than anything I say up here, so thank you.
And, and I will say this, we heard some of the students on, on yesterday during the student advisory. You know, we hear a lot about our students, you know, throughout the public, but I'm telling you, the students in the Port Arthur Independent School District are absolutely amazing. When you hear them speak, when they, I mean, it's just, it's just amazing and just wonderful that they are who they are. They're kids, but they are truly smart, and I'm looking at, I heard them on the video, I heard them yesterday in public. And when I tell you, these kids here, you just wanna take them all and say, "They're all mine, they're all mine," and you wanna claim them, and you just wanna keep them there.
That's how I feel, too.
So, so at this time, we give Ms. Avery an opportunity to introduce and share with the stu, the students. They'll do, we have Jacob and Dana, they'll have an opportunity to actually present their proposal that, that advanced in state. So you guys get a advertisement of that, and then we have our other fellow students to just share their highlights and what the conference actually meant to them. So right now, Ms. Avery?
Okay, I'm gonna introduce them first and then the other two come up. My delegate, we call each other, they're delegates, Delegate Kenan Green, Delegate Duante Grogan, Delegate Lavinia Roy, Delegate Jacob Wells, and Delegate Dana Nguyen. They'll talk about themselves in a few minutes, but I'm gonna go ahead and do the proposal now.
So, good evening to everyone. My name is Jacob Wells, I'm a junior at Wilson Early College High School.
Good evening, my name is Dana Nguyen, I'm also a junior at Woodrow Wilson Early College High School.
So before we start today, I just wanna say thank you to you all for all of your support, as this has been a great help to everybody, and I speak on behalf of all my members in this club, all twelve members who are not able to be here today, but we are very grateful for your support. And so for this third year, my third year, and her second year in this program, the topic that we chose was teacher shortage, right? This is a very prevalent topic and prevalent conflict in Texas, right? And so for our proposal, we proposed a solution that overall raises teacher salary, and although it may seem simple, it is a simple problem, I mean, a simple solution to a simple problem, a big one at that. And first, the approach we took is we looked at the stress teachers go, undergo in their classrooms, and we had to know, notice that teaching itself is a stressful position, but however, the pay is underappreciating and just undermining overall. And so as we increase this pay, we can minimize the stress teachers feel because at home, teachers not only feel the stress in the classroom, but also at home. Not at home, not knowing if they'll be able to make the ends meet at the end of the month. And so this compounded stress creates a dysfunctional teacher in the classroom, and the dysfunctional teacher cannot reach the minds of over a hundred kids. And so by raising this pay, we can take off that load of stress at home and have our teachers fully present in the classroom, ready to engage with our students.
Also, we did not just only raise the pay, also we included the benefits or increased the benefits. So as of right now, based off our research, we learned that teachers have around five days of paid time off for the whole entire year, which we think is unreasonable due to the fact that they work with kids, kids get sick, and we all get sick. So therefore, we changed that to five per semester, and we hope that increasing the salary, the annual salary, and also increasing the benefits, we also get better teachers and just less of a teacher shortage and more of, a lot of teachers apply.
By fully implementing both of these changes, we can fix the problem of where we have more teachers leaving the profession than we have teachers coming in. We can overall make the teacher profession and overall more financially attractive position and profession, and we can attract new and qualified teachers to the profession. Thank you. And did anybody have any questions?
I didn't have, have any questions, but I definitely wanted to compliment you all. You all spoke very, very well. You all were very knowledgeable, which I, I know you all personally from, from Woodrow and speaking with you all, but hearing you, hearing you all talk about the research in which, and actually using real world situations, everything that you all are talking about is things that we have to do in government in these positions. Just last year, we did a raise of trying to do the same thing that you're talking about doing. And so I would encourage you all to, don't lose that fire, don't lose that passion, keep going, because everything that you are fighting for and proposing for are things that we really need to happen. And so I just wanna commend you all on that, and job well done.
Thank you for that, Mr. Goodwood. And next, we'll have our two delegates, Lavinia Roy and Duante Grogan come up and talk about some of their experiences.
Good afternoon, I'm Duante Grogan, and I'm currently a junior at Woodrow Wilson Early College.
I'm Lavinia Roy, I am also a junior at Woodrow Wilson Early College.
So Youth in Government is a very, very good program that I highly suggest that many of my peers put their time into. We went to the Calahari Resort and man, that was a very, very nice resort. I mean, it had a water park, it had an arcade center, the rooms, they were just amazing. And this program, it not only allows us to put ourselves out there, but it gives us the opportunity to put ourselves out there with eleven hundred other students, you know? Many ideas from other students around Texas, getting to hear their feedback on problems around Texas was very nice, and I highly suggest this program.
As for me, my highlights, I am a very competitive person. I love debate, I love engaging in debate, and so being able to put my knowledge and research into a certain topic that I personally find interested and getting to highlight that and push that forward to the other students that are competing for the, at state was a very great experience for me, and I hope to do it again next year.
So, this was my first time competing in Youth of Government or anything akin to it, and as a sophomore, going in there in just area even, and then advancing to state was just something to just feel, the feeling was immaculate. And being able to go to the Calahari Resort, just having it be an awesome place with awesome people, very knowledgeable people was just great. It's overall just a great experience, and I'd highly recommend it to everybody in PAISD, it's great.
One, I have one question before you go. You said you like to debate? How do you debate smiling? Because you like to smile all the time.
So, I like to, with me, smiling is more of a show of confidence. It helps me be put more at ease because I always smile. I can't go a day without smiling. It's a, what's it called, a, a note of assurance? So, being able to smile actually really helps me in debate, like in competition, because it's like, life isn't something that you're supposed to take serious one hundred percent of the time, so why not have fun when you're there to have fun?
And I asked that question because I watched you when you walked in, you had a smile on your face, you sat down with a smile on your face, you came up here with a smile on your face, then you was giving your presentation with a smile on your face, I'm like, how do I, how can I debate against you when you smiling? And I think something to be serious, but I have one question. Y'all say y'all went to the resort. Any of what's, you had all got, did y'all get to experience the resort?
We did.
Y'all have fun?
Yeah, a lot of fun.
All right, thank you. We have questions, Vice President, well, uh, Mr. Vice President, Michael.
First off, I'm, I'm looking at Le Grogan, and I've been knowing Le Grogan since the day he was born. So, to, to watch the young man that he has became and to watch his growth from, it, it's awesome, man. You speak very well, you, you handle yourself well. And I seen it as a young kid, him playing football for the Cowboys and me and his dad being friends and just knowing him that, that he has a good spirit. I know you, you, you with Mr. Charles, I, I was his coach at one time. But it, it's awesome to hear, we hear so many bad things, unwanted things about our kids at Port Arthur. And to see these five young people from Port Arthur do great things and be a part of those eleven hundred, I guarantee you those other eleven hundred are at their school board meetings right now, I had one, at one time, probably talking about you all. So, I, I love the way that you all represented Port Arthur, PAISD, because we hear so many negative, negative things about our district that it's time that we start promoting all positive things. And you all, you five are very, very, even you, Le Grogan, oh man.
And Ms. Johnson, then Ms. Ambrosian, then Dr. Brown.
Okay, mine is real quick, I just feel the need to have to speak to you all because I'm really proud of what y'all are doing. Y'all are extremely well spoken, I'm very excited that y'all are excited about that, and reason being because I did the same thing. And somewhere along the line, I kinda stopped hearing about Youth in Government after I graduated from the prestigious first class of Memorial High School in 2003. But after I graduated, I didn't really hear too many people talking about it for a few years. So I thought it had fell by the wayside, so the moment I actually heard that you guys had been going, I immediately got excited because I, along with the YMCA, I think it was Ms. Becky at the time, she helped us out, we practiced at the Y in the evening, and I didn't even know anything about what Youth in Government was. Someone just kinda peeked me about it, I'm real close with Ms. G, and she kinda was like, "Hey, we have this program." And we got with Ms. Becky, and it was exciting. Of course, their resort was not even in existence back in 2002 and '03, so we didn't get to go to a resort, but we actually, I don't know if y'all did it, sat in the House chairs and everything like that, they actually let us sit there as if we were a part of the House of Representatives at the Capitol and everything, and it was really exciting for us when we did it. So, it, it excited me when I did see that y'all were still continuing that, I got a lot of knowledge from it, learned a lot about government, which is why I'm probably so passionate about voting in government now. We need that because there's definitely a lack of education and knowledge with our youth and even some adults in the government aspect now. So, I'm just excited to hear that, I urge you guys to spread that to your peers that did not get a chance or not appointed at thirteen, and just let them know how amazing it is so that we can keep it going and keep being great and making a great name for PAISD. So you guys are amazing, and I appreciate you guys representing us well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations to you all, job well done. My question is, when, in, in your networking with other students around the state, did you find that most of the students shared the same interest as, as yourself, and if so, did y'all discuss that? Did you make a, an agreement to counter, follow up at some point in time with, with ideas and solutions to the concerns?
So hello again. So networking, that ability is one of my favorite things to do, I love to talk, I'm a big talker. So at state and even our district, it's so amazing to see and meet different people of multiple backgrounds because they don't know Port Arthur. When, when they ask us where we're from, we say Port Arthur, they say where, we say two, two hours away from Houston. It always goes in that direction, but to be able to see where they come from, where, what type of programs they have at their school, and what proposal they have, because we're a state of first, what proposal they have, what we do is we help each other. And also, later on, we'll tell you about the rewards that we receive. But going into the second round of debate for our state conference, there's a thing called pro-intent speeches, pro and con intent speeches, where there's one person picked for each proposal that made top ten, and you have to speak really well about it for three minutes or really against it for three minutes. And what I have learned from that experience is that there's this girl, her name was Delegate E, that's what we called her, and she loved our proposal, and she offered to be a con intent speech for us, which means she'll speak against us. However, she asked me personally, like, "Can I have your number so that I can get all the questions that you know how to answer? So that even though I would talk against your proposal, you'll be able to speak really well about your proposal?" So the networking aspect is really well, in my opinion, because we meet people from different areas and different backgrounds. So of course, we all help each other the way we can, but at the end is debate, so we all wanna win. But of course, it's all good intentions, and we all will always try to help each other. Thank you.
Well, again, congratulations to you all. Thank you for what you've done, we are extremely proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
First, I'm very impressed with and proud of your presentation styles. And Dr. Porter mentioned earlier, he said in this way, but you know, I, I like smart. And he, obviously, everybody on this panel loves smart, and you all demonstrated smart tonight, but more importantly, obviously, you demonstrated smart in your representation of the school district in Austin. I'm somewhat jealous, though, about the place you were able to spend time, because I've been there, it is a wonderful place, I wish I could have been there with you. But, but, but the main point I wanna make beyond just applauding your excellent work is to encourage all of you to apply for the scholarships that are coming up next few days and weeks. With the presentations, skills that you all have demonstrated this evening, surely you can put together some nice essays. And that's kind of the challenge that some of our students sometimes seem to get blocked on, is, is the scholarship, the essay writing. But I, I, I happen to be part of several organizations where the scholarship applications are due. March first, the One Hundred Black Men of Greater Beaumont, which by the way, organization, some of my colleagues are jealous about this, but three out of the top five scholarships went to Port Arthur Youth, Franklin Wilson Early College, three out of the five. And they, they've received thousands of dollars through that particular program. The Royal Club of Port Arthur is due the next few weeks, that's March twentieth, I think. One Hundred Black Men is March first, the Royal Club is March twentieth. Pete Port Arthur Industrial Group has a nice pot of money that they're ready to give out, so those are just ones I've heard. There are other major organizations that are supportive of our community, and I hope that you all have been already working to practice your writing and that you, you will take advantage of meeting the deadlines to apply for scholarships. I mean, it's, it's money, right? You, you'll need it going to college, but thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Porter.
Well, once again, we'd like to thank our five students who are here. As all of our board members have stated, we are extremely over proud of you. Would like to acknowledge Mrs. Stewart, Assistant Principal for Wilson Early College, who's here supporting, she's, she's, she's supported everywhere, she's all over the place. And then we have a representative of our parents, Mrs. Joseph, and her husband are with us in the back. But I will say this, your parents have to be, they have to be proud of you. Because I'm telling you, with everything that is happening in the world, in our country, the state and locally, you are what's right about Port Arthur Independent School District and our community. You, the five of you represent why all of us who work in the Port Arthur Independent School District get up every morning and come. The five of you represent what is right and why these board members come and fight with me constantly about things that they want for you because of you and the way you are. Continue in the right direction, continue on your path, and we cannot wait to see where you end up. We'll be older, but I'm telling you, we're gonna hear, all of us will be older, sir, including you. But we can, we will, we will, we're gonna hear about you in a positive way. We cannot wait. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, we wanna end off with like a funny little highlight that we have experienced at state, so, yeah, that's a story, I gotta take that. Okay, so, I don't know, like I told y'all, I'm a talkative person, so there was this little girl, and she had a little happy birthday sign, and this is right before getting prepared to go debate. So when I seen her, I ran up to her, I said, "Happy birthday," and I made sure to get all my team members, and I told her, "Come over here, let's have a happy birthday." And then her father was right there, her father was like, "Oh, what organization y'all part of?" and you know, just conversating with us. And we're saying, "Oh, we're part of the YMCA, we're here for Youth in Government," and he said, "He's a big supporter of the YMCA," which I, which I remember, he's a big supporter, so we said, "Okay." So then later on, going throughout the day, when we came back, and for those of you who asked, "Did y'all get to enjoy the resort?" Yes, we did. Oh my, yes, we did, we were tired. So, one of the things we got to do were the arcade, and I wanna thank Jacob for this part because he had his card, and you know, when you go to the arcade, you have points on a card, and you get all your tickets. So he had like a few points left, and they were kicking us out to go back to our room for our curfew. And I told him, I was like, "Hey, go give it to a little kid, since we're not gonna be back here," and that's our last day here, just go give it to a little kid. So the first kid he tried to offer it to said no, thankfully, well, not thank you, but he just said, "No, thank you." And so we're like, "Okay," then I reminded Jacob, I go, "Hey, there's a little girl here, her birthday, we need to give it to her, like it's her birthday, we have to give it to her." And we're all the way out, and I see her in the corner of my eye, then I tapped on Jacob, I go, "Hey, give me your card, give me your card, it's her birthday, it's her birthday." He's like, "Okay, go run up there and give it to her." So I ran over there, and I gave it to her, and her father and the mom was like so thankful, saying, "Thank you so much, you're so kind." And I'm like, "Thank you," and I said, "Don't just thank me, thank him," because he, he was like far away over there. And then the man started following us, not in a weird way, but started following us, and started following us, and went to shake all of our hands, and he goes, "Have y'all had ice cream yet?" And we're like, "No," but all of us, the people that were there with us, we didn't want him to pay for us. We're like, "No, it's okay, like we got it, we have our money, it's okay." He's like, "No, cuz I left my credit card up there and told them that anybody with the YMCA shirt, which is the shirt we have on today, can get free ice cream." Now let me tell y'all something about the ice cream place, it is like eight dollars, ten dollars expensive for just a little one scoop of ice cream. So we all looked at him like, "Are you sure?" Like, we were joking, "Are you sure?" And he goes, "Yeah." And then he shook her hand, and I said, "Oh, can we have your name?" And, what was his name? I'm so sorry, I forgot his name for a second, so, okay.
I actually forgot his name.
Okay, his name was Edward, I think, is it Edward?
Edward Logan.
Edward Logan, there you go, Edward Logan, Edward Logan, okay, that's his name, but we asked him what's their credit card name, cuz you know, just curious. And he said, "Ramsay Logan," or something along those lines, I mean Gordon Logan, sorry, Gordon Logan. So we go up there, and we go into the ice cream place, we're waiting, we're at the front line, about to be served, and then we get told, "Y'all all gotta go back to y'all room." We said, "Please, can we ju, can, please, it's our last day, please," they go, "No, you have to go back to your room." So we all went back, and then the next morning, we're on the bus on the way back to Port Arthur, and Mr. Charles tells us, "Hey, remember y'all told me about that story of that man who y'all met?" We're like, "Yeah." He goes, "So, he came on my floor when I was monitoring the students, and we were just having a talk, and he was saying how the police trying to harass him for giving kids ice cream, or whatever, we laughed or whatever." And then he told us how, I don't know if y'all know what Sports Clips is, in case y'all are aware, the person that we met was the CEO of Sports Clips.
Wow.
So, one thing I will say that we have also from Mr. Charles that he told us about is that when you have genuine intention with other people and you just have kindness in your heart, you tend to meet other genuine people as well. Because this man, you, if you look, not in a nice way possible, he was humble. If you would have looked at him, he wasn't wearing a blazer, he wasn't wearing Gucci, no name brand, he was just there with his kids, enjoying his family. So we thought that was like a funny little highlight from our state conference.
To add on to this, like, she, she kinda, she kinda forgot some things, but...
Okay.
She said, she says kids, but this is over fourteen hundred people he's paying for ice cream. I mean, I bought a nuke shake, it was fourteen dollars and it was not worth it. This is over fourteen hundred peo, fourteen hundred dollars, and I don't know, she forgot, Mr. Charles was asking, I'm like, "Man, what do you do? Cuz you just left your credit card and you're paying for so much ice cream," he was like, "Do you know how much money that is?" He was like, "Yeah, man, it's just a couple thousand dollars."
Just a couple thousand.
And so that's where he stated his, he stated his name, "I'm Edward Logan, my father's Gordon Logan," and so now he is, he is the CEO of Sports Clips. And, yeah, and so, to begin the closing, to begin the closing, so we don't talk your heads off, but to begin the closing. We do all ask for your continuous support in this program, cuz it has really served as an outlet for all of us to really train up those skills that we'll need in that next level. I mean, I'm pretty sure I can say this, for all of us, we didn't always speak this fluently, as fluent as this. We weren't always able to come up here and speak with confidence and voice our opinions how we are now, and this is all from this program, and we just thank y'all for that.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just the awards, just the awards. So one more thing, for our state, this is the first group in, okay, we're gonna start with district off, since I was told. I'm trying to shorten it down. So in district, multiple of us got top proposal award, which is basically the best proposal within your district, and that was... And that was my group and Lavinia's group, if I'm not mistaken. Also, there was two people who got the distinguished delegate award, which was Lavinia Roy and Kwan White, who is not here with us today. Now, to move on to our state. Me and Jacob were the first people in history, because I just want to have to name that out. We advanced to our second round in state, which nobody has ever done, and it's the top twenty-eight proposals out of one hundred and one. So yeah, and then also to, one more award is for DeKai Wotie, got distinguished delegate at state. And that is also the first person to ever get a distinguished delegate at state. Yeah.
Perfect.
President Bartine, President Bartine. Excuse me, Dr. Porter, what's that written on their shirts? Can they, tell us?
This actually says Texas Youth and Government. This is a T-shirt, because every time we go out there, they give us multiple different kinds of merchandise. So we have actually multiple different kinds of T-shirts. And this says Texas Youth and Government, and it's a big design, it's a, as a Texas, of course. And they just were required to wear those, because they, of course, they need to keep track of the 1,400 kids that are there. And actually, after, one last thing, actually after, I learned that I was actually elected as club leader of the Youth and Government Program for next year.
Why are we not surprised at that? No surprise.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Oh, okay. My last thing, I just got, I got, I got one question for Dr. Porter. And this has nothing to do with Youth and Government. This is pertaining to one of the changes you talked about in your student advisory meeting yesterday. I was asking, specifically the change where you talked about taking away the transportation from alternative campuses.
Correct.
To example PAC. And my question was about the taxes, right? So citizens are taxpayers, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but.
You are correct.
These correct dollars, these tax dollars actually go to fund these buses, correct?
Correct.
And so would that mean that these buses actually belong to the community?
No, sir. Let me say this, and I'll make it short. Transportation is not something we have to do. It's not a legal mandate that we have to provide transportation. That is a privilege. And that's why we always try to tell students, "If you're on the bus, take care of the bus. At least allow the bus driver to drive you safely, because it can be taken away from you." Transportation is not something that is mandated for a district.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask, well, you all sit down, we want you to state, but yeah, but I'm going to say that, you know, our students got to this point, but it just didn't happen overnight. So I'm going to ask Mr. Lee and Mr. Charles to come up and talk about what we're doing in the schools to get them to this point. I mean, it, it just didn't wake up with all of the knowledge that they have in their heads.
Yeah, so first, that's what I wanted to do too, is commend Mr. Lee. Mr. Lee does a fantastic job with elementary curriculum as well, and he'll talk a little bit about that soon. But a lot of what the kids get in elementary prepares them for secondary. And we put in a lot of work within the curriculum to make sure that the TEES is giving the kids those opportunities to learn what it means to participate in government. So Mr. Lee, I'll let Mr. Lee share, and then I'll conclude with some updates that we're looking forward to, that you guys will be very excited about. Okay, just, it'll take probably a minute of my time, of y'all's time.
Okay, good evening to Dr. Porter and to the school board. So the topic is, what are we going to talk on?
Voting.
Okay, we can talk on voting, but also as a leeway into what our students have presented, the curriculum is very expansive and the state standards, they're very detailed. We have no textbook that is fully aligned to the standards that teach to the depth and complexity of it. So it's our responsibility, we have to supplement where it's needed with activities, with other instructional resources, whether we ask for them to be paid or whether it's something that's made in-house. Currently, we're making posters, instructional posters that are homemade in PISD for our students to use as instructional tools that helps supplement the curriculum. Another initiative that I'm looking forward to is for next year, for elementary. I have taken, I'm taking the high school and the middle school Future Business Leaders of America curriculum and their objectives, and I'm trying to dumb it down for elementary, put it on their level and take many objectives for that and turn it into an after-school club, so that students can work on things like learning economic reason, economic reasoning, things like public speaking, you know, making a composition as well, and learning about the political process and how policy ties into everything. This, at the end of the school year, we're looking forward to a social studies spelling bee, and we want to really stretch students' thinking and their vocabulary and highlight students who do well in that aspect. As far as voting is concerned, we know this is a very integral time for students to learn about voting. We have state objectives, state standards that specifically speak on voting and also indirectly speak on voting. And so with that, our students have to understand the history of voting. First of all, the right to be able to vote, and then once you have that right, your duty to vote has a civic responsibility. And also, when those who can't vote, their voice is not heard, decisions are influenced by those who at the time had the right to vote. So they have to understand why things went the way they did. And also, why, how do we use voting in our daily lives for simple tasks? So with that objective, that's a big thing that's right now. We have a twenty-point methodology for social studies and civic responsibility is a big component of it.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
My man. All right, so coupled with that, we're going to need you guys' support, and I know you guys are going to give it to us. But we are, the students, and this is their idea, for next year, we are going to try to do a local youth and government program. And what that will consist of is actually taking what we're doing in state with real state proposals, but looking at local government things that, that we could do. So we'll try to have mock city mayor, a mock city council members, right? So because I think a big, a huge part of voting is understanding how things work. And that's one thing our kids lack sometimes, because you have to experience and engage in it. And I think they have been able to do it on a state level, and they understand what it's like to have proposals and do legislation, make bills and all of those good things. But we want to give all of our kids, because it does cost a lot of money to go. But if we do it locally, we could provide it and we could actually advocate for that and give them opportunity to understand, what district do you live in? Who are your district representatives, right? What does that look like? So, so we'll actually be the, probably the first, the first district to really spearhead something like that to that capacity. And we will be working, we're going to propose to work with the YMCA, since they already have the framework for the state level. So you guys could look forward to looking at some things with that. That's one of the initiatives. And we're really looking at the vote, that's one thing we're really pushing. But for them to vote and understand the capacity of what that means, they have to understand how the other things work, right? So once again, in conclusion, we'd like to thank Dr. Getwell, we'd like to thank all the board, Ms. Carrier, because she, she had a part to play in coming and working with our students as well. And Ms. Lot, I can't say enough about Ms. Lot. I know she, she's quiet, but I mean, with the video, she, she came to me with the news. I mean, the kids actually were on the news this week, they made the news. And I think one of the state reps, I think Christian Manuel, right, y'all had a chance to talk with him. I mean, it's, it's a lot that's going on that they have experienced, and it's because of you guys. It's because of the team, you approved it, you supported, you financed it. And we're just looking forward to just making you guys proud as well and just represent the district properly. So thank you guys so much. Thank you. Okay.
And, and I think we have a question or two from one of our board members. Let me say this, Jacob, I meant to clarify that too. Now, no bus transport, we don't, we're not mandated unless it's special needs. Okay, I needed to put that in there. Special needs must be transported, but no, no one else. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, I was talking to someone outside of the student advisory meeting about the thing you were talking about. And they actually mentioned the word, of course, illegal. And they were like, "You shouldn't be doing that, that's illegal." And I was like, you know, I'm going to ask them about that.
No, it's not illegal, only special needs. Yes, okay. And I did enjoy the conversation yesterday, it was great. Oh, okay, so I believe we're going to move the discussion item up. Is that okay? Okay. So I don't, I guess it's good to have you all here. It, of course, does pertain to you and I guess everyone in general. So let me just go ahead and say what I want to say, so we can determine whose part is to play. I am first, first and foremost, very excited to hear about those new activities and new, of course, opportunities coming to our, our district, especially as it relates to the experience in which they all got and received. I think that it is important that other students are allowed the opportunity to. One of the things that really picked my brain about three days ago, before I, this was an agenda item, was this is voting season. And you know, people are still not knowing that it's that time to vote. And I know that we, as I put on here, as the Port Arthur Independent School District, we are the primary source of education here in our city. And I think that it is very important that we are not only making our students aware on what voting is, but also learning how to vote. I'll give you an example. As you all know, I was eighteen years old when I was running for the school board. I was housed right there at the library with the rest of my trustees as we were campaigning. And I had twelve of my classmates, well, roughly twelve of my classmates who came to vote for me. And when they went in to go vote, they came right back out with sad faces. And so I'm like, "What's going on?" It's like, "Well, they said we can't vote." I'm like, "Why you can't vote?" They said, "We're not registered." So that kind of picked me, picked my brain to start noticing that there are some things that we can start doing within our school district and within our school system to get them prepared on learning to vote. I don't know how we can get this done or if we can get it done, but this is just some food for thought and possibly an idea that hopefully can come to fruition. Maybe we could partner with our county or with someone or getting the actual voting machines and possibly generating our elections that way, as it relates to choosing who will be homecoming king and homecoming queen, prom king and prom queen, as student government president and executive cabinet. So that way, our students can actually start practicing voting without knowing they're practicing voting. I tell people all the time, I've been voting since I was three years old, because I went to the voting polls with my grandpa. Saw my grandpa turning the thing and pressing vote. I saw when they gave my grandpa the sticker, so it was second nature to me. However, not all of my classmates had that same support system. So if we could possibly look at doing some more innovative things, like you said, it's easier when you're engaging with it. It's easy when you have to, to register to vote, to vote for homecoming king. And then you know the ballots will be held, the ballots are going to be in the commons area at Memorial High School. And I know before I get to lunch, I have to go vote. So it's second nature whenever it comes down to actually exercising their right in, in civil and local elections and state elections. So is that something that we could possibly get done or something that we could possibly look into? Yeah. And let me, Mr. Charles, before you, and we have done that at the high school, Memorial High School. We've had the voting ballots booths, the actual booth, for that very same reasons. I just want to let you know, it hasn't been done before.
Perfect, so. So legally, we're, we're supposed to give kids opportunity to register twice a year. And that's one in the fall, one in the spring. And we, we just finished it by February fifth this year at the high school. And I think Bates worked part of that in one of the previous years, and they have someone at Memorial High School that actually worked with some community people to come in and help with the registration component. Another thing that we've done, I'm sorry.
I'm telling you what we do at Wilson. I'm actually deputized, I teach all seniors there. So when they become eighteen in my class, that's what they do, and it's a big party. And they get, I bring them in and they can actually do it and sign, but their, you know, their parents know about it, of course. And that's a big, big step, by getting their license. So and every eighteen-year-old or seventeen in ten months in my class, that Wilson, get registered to vote.
And I'd just like to echo, like, so the main thing, that's why we're, we're making these upcoming proposals to have that youth in government, because what you don't experience sometimes, it's hard to really see the value of it. And by, by starting with educating and giving the kids hand-on experience with the process. Because like right now, I think we have district, I think district three right now, where they have some new council members that's, right? So it's like giving, if we have that local government program, they would be familiar, because they have to actually research what district they're in, who is the actual district representative, right? The county, the city managers. So, so right now, we're in the planning phase of that. And of course, it's going to take a lot of work, Mr. Lee and I. We're going to look at developing the, you know, some policy for, get a handbook, go through those processes and make sure that we have more rigorous performance assessments in the curriculum that give kids those hands-on opportunities. So, so those are some things that we're doing right now. Now, prior before COVID, there are some things that we were doing too, like busting the kids. We, we've done that in the past, bust the kids from the high school here to the libraries. But then, if you recall in 2018, there was some, some political things that transpired with the governor about you sending the kids, it could be against Article Three, if I'm, if I'm recalling properly, where you trying to lure the kids one way with one political candidate. So we look more into that, and I think that's something that you guys could look at in the future. But it has to, it has to be very strategic and thorough if we go back to that, because we have to make sure it's educational purposes, and not to really push them to vote a certain, a certain way. And that's something we could, as a team, we could look at and do those things. But I, I'm very passionate, I know Dr. Porter talks about it all the time, about just voting and, and asking us all the time, what are, what are some new innovative things? Because he's always open to doing new things, and that's why I really appreciate and commend Dr. Porter for that. And that's where the local youth and government and these new initiatives that you guys could look forward to seeing are coming in forefront. So, so thank you, thank you, Mr. Getwell. By the way, there's, there was a good recommendations and we are, we're right on it, we're going to be working on those things.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Dr. Porter.
Thank you all for coming and staying with us past seven. We know, you know, the tick, 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 so that's a good thing. Thank you again. Okay. Next, we'll have Mrs. Lot to talk about some of the things that's happened over this school year, well, since last month.
That's a tough act to follow, Youth and Government. Okay, so since we last met, we have had nine observances, including Black History Month. This is CTE month, so we have been sharing videos that were produced by our audio and video production students at the CTE campus that highlight all of our programs. And the neat thing about the videos, the children are speaking in their respective areas. So you have that in the background, but you also have a lot of the videos, a Spanish version of those as well. We also celebrated Groundhog's Day, School Counseling Week, Tet, Mardi Gras, Valentine's Day, and President's Day. I'm not sure if we covered in the last meeting the fact that our high school hosted this year's TCEA Robotics Competition, where Lincoln Fine Arts placed third, and the students in the green are from Adams Elementary. They also participated in the competition, and we had students from Sam Houston that were also there as support. We have had several campuses with several groups that have been representing and competing and winning. We've had GT Team competitions and winners. We've had UIL, not UIL, TMEA Choir and Band competitions. We are going to host UIL next week. Some of our, our Alpha Campus had a You Go Girl National Women's Day brunch, where the young ladies, and that's the bottom middle picture, the young ladies in attendance had custom-made shirts and they, they customized their own lab jackets and conducted experiments while they also ate brunch and talked about the experiments that they were conducting. So in this particular picture, they were cooling their drinks with hot ice. And then in the bottom right corner, we have a group from the Memorial Ninth Grade Academy. I think it's the Principals of Design class, if I'm not mistaken, they did a presentation at City Hall. We are also rewarding the teachers in our district. We were awarded the teacher incentive allotment. And what this, the goal of this is to reward our top teachers financially to attract and retain them, because their rewards are so significant that it may lead to them actually having a six-figure salary once you combine their teacher incentive allotment bonus with their salary. So, and it's primarily based on the proven student growth from one year to the next, and this is our first group of recipients. Something else that I wanted to highlight from Wilson, this, this really impressed me. The English one class did a reenactment of Romeo and Juliet, where it had a happy ending of Romeo and Juliet actually getting married. So each class period, every student was assigned a role, and they dressed for the part. Every student had to create a mask. It couldn't be anything that was already purchased. You had to make a mask from, decorated from scratch, so that you could wear that at the reception. There was food and punch at the reception. The best man had to make a toast, the maid of honor had to make a toast, Romeo and Juliet had to recite vows. And all of this was written by the students. There was a menu with food from this era, and there was a reception where they played games from this era. So they played little archery games at the reception, and then there was music. And as you can see, the teacher put like a church background on the. And as you can see, the teacher put like a, a church background on the, um, projection screen. And the students were really engaged because when you think about reading Shakespeare, sometimes it's confusing, sometimes it's boring. But you could not tell this entire day with all of the class periods engaging in this type of activity. Um, a lot of our campuses, mostly elementary, celebrated the one hundredth day of school. The national, I think it's the National Sorority, uh, NSPDK is the initials. I'm not really sure what that, what that is, uh, NSPDK is like a, a sorority for educators. Five, National Sorority of Five Delta Kappa, thank you. They, um, have their annual read-a-thon every January. And these are the winners from last year that were presented their plaques. Um, it was Terrell in first place and then Adams and Washington, um, also were in the top three. Um, we celebrated, uh, National Women's Heart Health Day. And these are teachers and staff from Memorial Ninth Grade in the red. Um, this is, that's the youth and government group in the middle at the bottom. And we have, uh, one of our Wilson students who received, um, the President Scholarship from Prairie View A&amp;M University, Miracle Queen at the bottom right. In athletics, uh, we are in the playoffs for our Titans basketball team. Our Lady Titans did make it to the first round of the playoffs. We had our, um, Clash of the Titans for eighth grade basketball and Lincoln won. The boys and the girls both won, so they are housing the trophies and those are pictures after those games. TJ's eighth grade did place third in a district tournament. Um, and throughout, right before they hit that playoff game, the Lady Titans, um, basketball team had a lot of, um, nights where they engaged the community. They had middle school night, jersey night, senior night, parent night. So they, um, really, and, uh, teacher appreciation night. So they really engaged the community to, um, have them to come out and show the support for the female basketball competitions. We are in baseball season now and softball season. And we are also in, uh, golf season. Thank you to, um, Board President Barti. He sent some pictures today that we posted from the girls', um, golf tournament. And we also have four of our, uh, Titan athletes that signed on National Signing Day. Uh, one volleyball player who will be playing, also playing softball for Kilgore College, um, Dakara Anderson. And then three of our Titans will be playing football for Old Dominion, McPherson, and University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley. And we also have soccer in full swing. Track season is here and we have powerlifting. So our bottom right corner, that's our girls' powerlifting team. And they look like they are standing on business already. Uh, community engagement, we have been heavily pushing the fact that open enrollment for returning students to register for the next school year. It has begun. We have been posting this flyer in the middle several times across all of our socials. We have also been sending all-call voicemails and, um, text messages. So, um, all of the parents in P I, P A I S D have been seeing this every week and getting those phone calls and text messages every week about registering returning students now for next year. Um, the YMCA has been promoting their, uh, two tutorials and dinner that they're offering and also sports programs. One is at New St. John and one is at Mount Sinai. Uh, this picture at the bottom right is also of the youth and government when they, uh, received the check from Chevron Phillips. And that, that, uh, event was at the West Side Community Development Center. At the top left of this picture, every year, Ed- Education First, um, Federal Credit Union, they have a program where they call Pay It Forward. And they have members who may work in school districts who choose to donate a portion of loans that they take out to that particular campus. So pictured are Lincoln, TJ, and Terrell who receive, um, portions of, receive checks from Education First. And then there were some more campuses that weren't represented that also received checks, um, which the checks were in the amount of like, like if I take out a loan and I say I want to give a portion of my loan to Memorial, then that's how the funds are accrued. And that's a once a year event, um, that happens every January. And these, um, other flyers are, uh, things that are happening in the community that we've also been promoting on our timeline that, uh, can engage our students. And, um, some more of our community engagement, our parent and family, uh, engagement coordinator, Rhonda Calco, she has what's called us a college series. And she has college representatives to meet virtually with parents and community members. And the, the representatives, um, give a presentation about what their college has to offer, what the admission requirements are, how do you apply, um, what the fees are, what the programs are, the degree programs, um, how the campus living is, like the, the dorm options. And so the first one was Lamar University and then this week was Texas Southern University. So this is something that she started last year and it, um, picked, picked up momentum. And we're having more and more parents to join the Zoom to learn about the options for, um, colleges in Texas. And I, I think last year she may have had McNeese. So colleges that, um, giving the parents information on how their children can attend these colleges that, that are relatively close to us. The Riaud Foundation every year has a Bikes and Bibles giveaway event. So these are some of the photos from our campuses where they, uh, donated bicycles, um, vans, tennis shoes, sports balls, uh, candy, stuffed animals, uh, sweatshirts and jackets. And so these are pictures of some of the recipients of that generosity. And this is our, uh, media summary for the month. We had twenty newspaper articles, six television news stories. And the crisis communication all-calls, that includes the, it, the number is high because it includes the registration reminders. And we had a couple of meeting reminders, like for Ms. Calco's meetings and for multi, uh, Mr. Sellis with the multilingual migrant meetings. Our media team has produced, um, the videos that you see in the middle square. And then we have, um, nine projects that are forthcoming. And, uh, we had two alumni in the news this month. One, uh, I think her name is Gloria Walker, but her dad is Mr. Succumbin. He teaches French at the high school. She is an alumni. I believe she graduated from Thomas Jefferson and she wrote a children's book. She was here and she went to, um, three of our campuses to read the book to the students. And then Mr. John Como, who, um, works for the city and he's an alumni of P I S D. And we, uh, lost three of our family members. Uh, so we remember retiree Marsha Scott, um, Ms. Pandora Jones, who was, um, a longtime educator at Wheatly. And then Mr. Cordell Lindsay, who was a longtime educator and coach at Lincoln. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, President Barti and Board members. As you see, we have been busy. That concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lot. And I can tell you one thing, those robo calls are coming. I catch them every day. Yeah, I catch it every day for my little boy. At this time we go to minutes, consider and if appropriate, approve the minutes of the January twenty-six, twenty twenty-four regular board meeting. Can I get a motion?
Some move.
Right, a second?
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Vice President Lot for the second by Secretary Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. The following items, which are routine and recurring nature, has been designated consent agenda item by the Board President per policy BE Local. All of the items in the consent agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee, in which event the item or items will be withdrawn immediately from individual consideration in its normal sequence after the item is not requested and separate discussion has been acted upon. Trustees, I give you a minute to look through your consent agenda items.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to request a withdrawn item, consent agenda item number four and also item number eight.
Okay. I'd like to get a motion to approve consent agenda item number one, two, three, five, six, and seven.
Some move.
I have a motion on the floor by Trustee Getwood, in a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Narcisse. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Get Mr. Stewart Narcisse.
We have to make a motion first.
Oh, yes. Now can I get a motion for consent agenda item number four?
Some move.
Can I get a motion?
No.
I mean, a mo- a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second and now discussion.
Yes, uh, Dr. Porter, you could, uh, explain to me clarity on, on this item. The twenty, the twenty-five thousand dollars that's being requested, this is for the engineering firm to do what? Because is all, is it for the proposal drawing? Is it for the improvements? And also is this is that, uh, the new PAC or the current PAC?
Yes, to all of the above. Mr. LaBeach is our architect and he is in charge of the actual renovation. Uh, he did not have anyone in his firm to do the technology and security. So we've hired MEP Tech to oversee the technology of the new, uh, well, the former darling, new Port Arthur Alternative School, uh, technology and security for that.
Oh, okay. So it's the, the total, the total for the project was six hundred and some thousand.
Yes.
Okay. And then twenty-five thousand just for this.
Correct, okay. Yeah, and that's what they had to be. It's split out because he didn't have anybody.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's call for, uh, a vote on consent agenda item number four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Let's like get, uh, a motion in second for consent agenda item number eight. I have a motion on the floor by Trustee Brown, second. Second by Trustee Ambrose. Now discussion, Mr. Narcisse.
Yes, uh, would there be a, I guess, a presentation given on this proposal?
Um, I have given explanations, but not a presentation, no.
Okay. So the explanation, if you can explain, because I didn't receive any type of background information in regards to this, you know, how we got to this point, the cause of us getting to this point. I don't think I received was the, uh, I, I saw on the agenda Monday that this was going to be voted on tonight.
Well, I did send out, I wrote a justification and it was sent out. It's been on Facebook because we made sure that parents understood as well. Now let me say this, I think, uh, at this point, when we talk about revoking transportation, we understand that we have to do something. If you recall in our meeting about three weeks ago on us, when we talked about things that were going on in the district and the board wanted more emphasis on discipline and, and the board was in agreement with that. So we have to come up with something in order to deter, and as we talked about, was the PAC center. We don't want students thinking that our disciplinary alternative education program is a place to go to that's fun, that they can go to just because. I think we're doing a, a better job with the leadership there that is changing the, the, um, the image, the image of PAC. We don't want it to be something fun. But we also understand that there is an accountability and a responsibility of our students and our parents. Actually, we don't want any student head PAC. But you can't have a, you can't have an alternative school that children want to go to. So we have to make it where our parents and our students are responsible. They have to come to school. But then I'm sure that once parents understand that they're going to be responsible for getting their kids to the alternative school, they may have a better or a more forceful, I'm going to say, conversation with children not to misbehave. I'll say this, as you saw tonight, we have some wonderful kids in the Port Arthur Independent School District. It's a very small percentage of our students that really act out. Some are re- repeat offenders and we have to do something to deter them. We, this is not punitive of them, it's a way that we can help them because we want to help all of our students. But we have to help them in a way that they understand that breaking the rules is not what we want them to do. And all of our students that are here, we have over eight thousand students. Every student, every child deserves to come to school every day and learn and not be interrupted by fights, arguments, and things that just should not happen in school. We're here to teach. We're not here to be referees. We're not here to wrestle with kids. And we need every child to concentrate and learn.
Also, what is the maximum of days a student, um, once, once they get assigned to go to a DAP? What is the maximum number of days they'll be assigned to that campus?
Forty-five, not forty-five days?
It's forty-five, uh, it's forty-five.
Sixty, sixty days.
I know it goes up if you get into an infraction while you're there, it goes up.
Sixty days. Correct, okay. Yeah.
What type of research have we also done in the manner of revoking transportation to DAP?
I've researched it because it was my decision. And I've looked up other districts and I've talked to principals, I've talked to parents. And I think it's going to work for us.
Do we, do we have a, a parent meeting with these parents who's going to affect or just a letter that was just sent out?
We informed the parents that that is what we're going to do. I was not asking permission from the community.
No, 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 parents, parents.
I was not asking permission from the parents. It was a decision for this district for all of our students. And we informed the parents and we gave justification for that.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but a DA, D A E P does not, the terminology of a D A E P isn't, it just means removing the student from the classroom does not mean that they have to go to a off-campus site for instructions, correct?
It's, Dr. Getwood, you want to ask, I know this, it's a disciplinary alternative education placement. So that means they're removed from.
Just from the classroom.
Not from just the classroom, from the campus. Dr. Getwood?
Oh, one, one sec. If you could turn your mic on, sometime it'd be hard for the recorder to pick up.
Thank you, no problem. Again, in reference to your, uh, question, with the D A E P, students are removed to the D A P from their regular campuses based up on discretionary kinds of offenses and they are mandatory kinds of offenses. So when a student commits an infraction, he goes through a process. And then he is withdrawn from that campus, moved to the D A P based up on infraction. And, uh, the lessons that, uh, he had on his main campus, we will continue with the curriculum for the most part at the D A P. But, uh, there are offenses that say that you have to go to the D A P and those are mandatory kinds of offenses.
So your, your question is, is that, well, your statement is that it has to be off-campus. It's not just removing in front of the classroom.
Let me go back, let me go back to that. We are fortunate in the Port Arthur Independent School District to have an off-campus D A P. There are some school districts are not as fortunate, they have a D A P on campus. But the D A P has worked historically for Port Arthur being off-campus.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, what is the game plan, once this is implemented, to how it's going to be tracked? Is anything will be brought back to the board, say, hey, it's working, maybe it's not working, maybe we should reevaluate this?
And what question are you r- r- referring to, Mr.?
If, if we, I said, if we implement this.
If the.
No, I was talking to Dr. Porter, if this is implemented, then how's it tracked? Or, uh, will something be brought back to the board for as evaluation?
We can.
Okay.
Ms. Getwood?
Uh, first and foremost, let me just quickly say, I want to thank you, Dr. Porter, for acknowledging, um, the conversation that we had about, and being open to, to the things that we wanted to do with disciplines. I first and foremost want to thank you for conducting your research and thank you for, for bringing, um, this. I, I do understand exactly where you're coming from and, and I can see where you're coming from with holding our parents accountable, with, um, trying to get that support from at home. Um, the only thing is I just have just a few concerns with it. Um, my biggest concern is, and like I said, I, I totally understand where you're coming from with it. But my biggest concern is we have to realize in which the clientele in the community in which we serve. And we also have to realize in which the times and, and efforts that we are living in and living amongst today. As we know, though, the five children who came here today, they have very strong support systems. And we know that so do most of our students in PAC. Um, and I know and I do understand that PAC is not the place that we want it to be right now as it relates to the, the attendance that is there, because we currently have one hundred and twelve students there, if I'm not mistaken. And I understand we want to get that down. But I really truly believe that there is some alternative routes that we can take outside of taking away the transportation. And the reason why I say that is because I really truly believe that if we were to take away transportation from that particular school, that the attendance would go down tremendously and the dropout rate would start to increase. When I think about. When I think about, and this is just me putting myself back into today's society, today's, today's climate of where our youth is and where our parents are. I know for a fact that my grandfather Lawrence Getwood would have had a conversation with me every single day that I had to wake up to go to PAC because he had no choice but to bring me there. But unfortunately, not every student has that same support system. They have, we have, we have to be honest with ourselves and acknowledge that we have students here who are telling their parents that I'm not going to school today. And the parents are just going to say, okay. We have students that, we have parents that are going to say, hey, I gotta go to work at seven o'clock, I don't know who's going to take you to school, you gotta figure this out. And that child is ultimately not going to go, which ultimately gonna bring more and more stress on that child. I already mentioned and, and we talked about it and I, I thank you for, for being open-minded about it as well. I believe that if we do move forward with this, that yes, it is going to, to help us attack, um, the, the, the attendance and the, the, the people and the amount of people that we have on that campus. But I still feel as though it's not addressing the main issue at hand within our students. It's the reason our students are going to PAC. As we already know, majority of the reasons that PAC, that students are going to PAC is because of vaping. We know that most of them are going to PAC because of fights. We know that most of them are going to PAC because of behavior issues, which obviously stem for things that could be coming from home. I really, really, truly believe that there is something else that we can do other than taking transportation away. I know that they have, um, currently Mr. and Ms. White, um, who is there to, to serve as a counselor for them, and I'm hearing that it is working. I'm hearing that they could use more of that. And I think that by us doing that versus taking the transportation away would kind of help us deter them from going to PAC. I also wanted to add that I really truly believe that we can stop kids from going to PAC if we just attack the problems at the main campus. We have sixty-three, our sixty, roughly sixty-seven seniors, oh, well, high school students who are at PAC right now. That's just sixty-three people who got caught. That's not saying that the others aren't doing it, that's not saying, no, that's sixty-three people who were caught in the act of doing it. So we're still not addressing the problem at the main campus. So we need to come up with some creative ways, um, and I was really excited and still am excited about hearing, hearing you say that you are open-minded, that you're ready to do things and take things up a notch. But I really think that, that we should, should really look at some alternative routes other than this. And then also, my last concern with it was, if it is approved, because I do know for a fact that this has to be voted on tonight, if this is approved, I would just ask the board that we at least give this until next school year. We have fifty days left within the school year. If we put this into effect in May first, that's going to mess up a lot of, 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 a lot of things that other people have going on. So if it is approved, I do just ask that, that we as a board consider either making this going to affect next school year or, or something of that sort. Because it's going to impact the community, yes, in a positive way, but also in a negative way as well.
Ken, I'm, I'm gonna say something before, before, uh, again, I'll let you, y'all have it. Um, I, I know this is a big, a big topic of discussion, but, uh, Mr. Getwood, I, I do have to agree to something that you said, I'm gonna disagree to something you said. Uh, at, at what point do we, as, uh, people of Port Arthur, going to stop crippling our kids? We cannot keep crippling our kids and go, I know we have problems at home, I understand it, but how do we fix that? Mama and daddy need to stop being friends to their children and be parents to their kids. That's, 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 that's the solution to the problem. Because at this point in time, if my son gets in trouble, and I think I can speak for anybody up here that have kids, we're going to discipline our child. If I don't have a transportation for my child to go to PAC, that means I'm going to have to stop doing what I'm doing as an adult to bring my child, my responsibility to school. Well, if they have, uh, transportation to go to PAC, I'm not worried about it as a parent. Oh, he's gonna go, he's gonna go, it's time. So it's, it's, if we do something about it, we're going to have complaints. If we don't do something about it, we're going to have complaints. If we go down the line, like you said, and start some things at the high school, well, if you start, well, uh, uh, laying down a hammer, shit like so, then we're going to argue, are we being too hard on the kids? And then it's going to be another excuse. When are we going to stop being, having, uh, crippling our kids? Because crippling our kids is not helping them in the future.
Uh, but, but, Mr. Barti, with all due respect, I, 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 I understand where you're coming from, but what I, what I really want you to do is ta, take yourself out of your shoes and out of, out of, out of your household. How you would conduct your household is how you conduct yours. That's not to say that the next person is going to do that. And I understand, trust me, if I had a child in this district and my child went to PAC, my child would hear from me every single day. And yes, I would bring my child, but I'm just being understanding of which the clientele and our stakeholders that we have in our district. You already know, you have a hard time trying to get them to come to P T A meetings, you have a hard time trying to get them to do just the simple stuff. You can't get them to come up here and go to the schools to actually meet with the counselors, meet with the teachers. So we, you have to just be, we have to be realistic in what we're dealing with. And while I understand that, yes, to somebody may be crippling, but, but it's honestly not. And like I said before, even if we do this or even if we don't, the problem is still not being addressed at PAC because we just, we literally just said and, and established, the students go to PAC, they do their forty-five days or sixty days and they go right back to the high school. There was no deterring in the process of them being at PAC. There's no resources at PAC that's helping students realize that what I did was a problem. What it is, is I gotta come to this school, I gotta wear a uniform, I can't talk during lunch, I can't doing, I can't do this, I can't do that, I gotta come to school, my mama gotta drop me off at school, mama gotta pick me up to school. In that process, that's not dealing with the reason why I'm vaping, that's not dealing with the reason why I'm fighting, that's not dealing with the reason why I'm doing what I'm doing. So there's things, it, it's deeper than just transportation.
Have you been to PAC since Mr. Curvis Frontno took, taken the reins?
And I have. And that goes, that, that's, that's adding to the point of which I'm, which I'm getting at, it's not the transportation that's the problem, it's the leadership that we have there. You just mentioned that since Mr. Mr. Johnson has, has taken over PAC, that student, Mr. Fortno has taken over PAC, my apologies, Mr. Fortno has taken over PAC, students look at PAC in a different light than what it used to be. I'm not saying that the past principal didn't do her part, but what I'm saying is, the administration that we have there now is actually enforcing it and running the campus as it is supposed to be. So we see a change in our students. You can, if, if you, if you bring a student from PAC right now, our next meeting, and they act, and you ask them, is PAC fun? They're going to say, man, PAC is not what I, what it used to be when I went last year. I got a prime example for y'all, I was just talking to a teacher at, at the Toasty Yoke and like she was saying, the problem with our school district and the problem with our PAC is that the same kids who are going to PAC are the same kids that that kindergarten teacher told the first grade teacher, hey, this boy over here doing this and the third, it wasn't addressed there. They get from first grade, get to second grade, wasn't addressed there, get to second grade, so on, so forth. So by the time they get to middle school, they lost cause. They get to PAC, my mama can't pick me, my momma can't drive me, already having a hard time trying to get in contact with mama anyway. So what, what am I going to do? I'm going to quit, I'm going to leave school. Students already understand that there's money outside of education. People already have the assumption that I don't have to go to college to be successful. We can't hide the world from them. So we cannot, we cannot sit up here and say that, oh, by giving them transportation to go to PAC is crippling them, it's not crippling them. We're giving them, uh, a way to get there. But the problem is, when they get there, what is happening to keep them from coming back?
Mr. Lawford, Dr. Brown, Dr. Brown and Mr. Lawford?
First, um, I appreciate this articulate, um, powerful conversation. I, I'm going to give, I guess, more kind of alternative viewpoint. Is that what you, is that the term you want, alternative, alternative viewpoint? I think school is much too easy in Port Arthur, Texas, much too easy. At all levels, whether it's PAC or, uh, the regular programs. And I think the more we do to raise expectations and to strengthen our accountability, um, of everybody who's involved with teaching our children, including the parents, I think the better our children are going to be in, in terms of learning. That said, I, I too, when I first saw the, uh, the, the recommendation, I was sensitive about some of the things that have been stated. At the same time, I thought, hey, well, we asked superintendent to address discipline, come up with some ideas, and so, so what are we going to do? If we don't approve this, then how does that motivate or encourage superintendent to keep coming with ideas to bring to us? So I, I regret even having to ask us, quite frankly. And, uh, I, I happen to also believe that everybody can be in charge and make decisions on a day-to-day basis of what's going on. In this case, I strongly support the superintendent's recommendation and, uh, and, and I, I think, and I appreciate what, what, what Trustee Getwood just said about the, the regular school pro, program. I personally would do more to prevent and work with the students, don't just give up on them at the regular campus before we send them to PAC. And that I hope, I assume, Dr. Porter and they're working, Dr. Getwood, they're working, and Dr. By and working on, trying to find ways to, where we work with the youth before they leave the campus. But, 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 but we, when we announced in advance and we're telling us to, what that young man just said, or Jake said, uh, concern, just stay out of trouble, do what you're supposed to do. So anyway, I support the, the, the recommendation.
And once again, Mr. Uh, Getwood, it's the certain fraction that gets you to go to PAC, am I correct?
Who are attending PAC, those who are there on mandatory infractions, we have nothing to do but follow statute. And that's what the law says we must do. Then there are those there who are discretionary infractions, and many times, those students who are there on discretionary infractions have been given many opportunities on the campus to correct their behavior. And you will see the paper trail, you'll see the referrals. And then they are sent to, uh, to PAC based on, uh, trying to work, counselors trying to work with the students. We have a full-time counselor at PAC who's working with students. And, uh, I'd just like to say this, as well as the recidivism to PAC, I don't have the data for me for this school year, but I did do research last school year and the year before that. And the year before, last year, we had twenty-three students to return to PAC who had been there before. And the year before, we had even a smaller number. So we don't see students just returning to PAC, to be returning to PAC. When they return, for the most part, they're returning because of a mandatory infraction.
Mr. Lawford?
Okay, first off, uh, you know, everything in Port Arthur is five minutes away. And like we live in some big metropolitan city where, but what if a kid? What if, uh, what, what would be the consequences if a kid doesn't have a way to PAC? You know?
Their truancy law is still in effect.
And have we looked at saying, okay, he's truant because of transportation? You know, one thing we do have is a city bus. That pass right in front of PAC. So if the kid doesn't go and say, okay, well, my, my mama don't have a vehicle, she can't bring him, my dad gotta go to work, and I, I don't have money to catch a city bus, what would be those consequences? Does that parent get a ticket? What would be the consequence? Because you're going to have some kids say, well, you know, I can't make it over there.
But you know what?
But again, that city bus pass.
You know, uh, you know, Mr. Lawford, what you're saying is correct, but I'm going to say this, we, as you said, and as everyone else has said, the students of Port Arthur can get where they want to get. They need to get to school. They can go wherever they want to go. And I'll say this as well, we teach children, we teach children to be responsible, that is our job, but the parent has a, uh, uh, they have to, yes, to, they have obligation to help their children. I would think that if a, if a student is having a hard time getting to the D A P.
Don't get in trouble.
They won't get in trouble. Absolutely. And I will say this, we talk about, and I know Mr. Getwood said, our community, our community, what do you want for your community? I mean, we understand that there are students and there are parents that not, that are not doing what they want, not doing what they should do. But I will say this, the law is the law. No matter who you are, no matter what family you come from, the law is the law. And if we do not expose our children to reality in this community, this state, this world, they're going to fail. I love my daughter. I don't expect the world to love my daughter. So we brought her up that she would be able to function in a cool, heartless world.
At this time, I'd like to call for the vote of consent agenda item number eight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Uh, no. Nay.
Motion carries. Questionnaire, Dr. Porter.
I have given you the list of teachers for your consideration.
Consider if and if appropriate, approve the employment of teachers, got a motion?
Some move.
Of the second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Information, Dr. Porter?
Average daily enrollment, eight thousand one twenty-six. Average daily attendance by month, eighty-nine point six.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. This time, we'll call adjournment of meeting at seven fifty-five P A. Some move. Motion and second, and we are dismissed, thank you.